I call this meeting to order. We have three items on the agenda today. And the first item will be 2019 City Medical Insurance Plan Update. And we will have Wendy Ritter-Raiser, Benefit Manager, joining us to make this presentation. Welcome, Wendy.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Make sure I get this set up correctly. Okay, can everybody see my PowerPoint? Great. Okay, so this is an annual update to the council. We do this every year and talk about how the Deferred Compensation Plan and the Health Plan are doing. There's no action required on the council's part. I'll talk first about the Deferred Compensation Retirement Savings Plan, and then pause for questions and move on to the Health Plan. Do feel free to interrupt during the presentation. It doesn't work as well on Zoom, as you know, but I'm sure we can make it work. So the Deferred Compensation Savings Plan, I just want to make sure my screen has advanced to the text. Is that correct? Okay, great. So in addition to the pension plan that is managed through the state, the city offers a Deferred Compensation Savings Plan. It's a multi-employer plan. When the Renton Regional Fire Authority separated from the city, it made sense for us to maintain the same plan. We have certain economies of scale and get better rates for our members by maintaining a combined multi-employer plan. During 2019, the committee followed all of the standard due diligence for plan fiduciaries and provided training and updated and reviewed our plan documents. In 2019, we did make a few changes to the plan. We moved some of our investment options to lower price-cost share. That's one of the things that is an advantage of being a multi-employer plan. The larger your balance in individual investment option, the lower the rates you can get. And I should let you know, the rates are all paid, all the fees are paid by the participants. Those expenses are automatically deducted from the participants' accounts. The city doesn't pay any of the administrative fees for this plan. We were able to reduce the, so in addition to going to lower investment expenses, and you'll see more detail on that in a few minutes, we were also able to reduce our administrative fees by, from 0.06% to 0.05%. That seems like a very small reduction, but on a balance of about $100 million, you know, it does add up, and we want to keep the fees as low as possible. We also made a few administrative changes that are listed there on the screen. As you're all very well aware, the U.S. economy changed significantly and markets changed significantly in the last few months. This has made a significant impact to the individual investment accounts that our participants have. And our investment advisor that we use, we use CAMAC, is advising more than a 25% downturn in the next quarter. They do meet with the committee and help us select fees, select investment options and funds for our participants. We do meet with them quarterly. Our next meeting will be via Zoom. TIA does do considerable outreach to our participants during any period of time, but particularly during these volatile markets, about the importance of diversification and staying the course rather than being real reactionary and selling when the market's down. And each individual does manage their own account and has the opportunity to make changes as they see fit. They can't, although, withdraw the money from the account. They can just change among the available investment options. And I'm sure you're familiar with the CARES Act. One of the many features of the CARES Act was to allow retirement plans such as ours to permit in-service loans and withdrawals. Typically, you can't draw money out of the account while you still have your job, but once you've left employment, either through retirement or other separation, that's when you can take withdrawals. The city doesn't offer loans from our plans, but we do offer hardship withdrawals if somebody has a significant financial hardship and it has to follow the IRS guidelines of definition of a hardship. The CARES Act allowed us to open up our plan to both withdrawals and loans. The committee, which is governed by both the RFA and the city, chose not to do that. It doesn't mean we couldn't offer it at some point in the future, but at this point, we're not opening it up for withdrawals for participants. This is an overview from TIAA, who is the record keeper for our plan. The overall value of our account is down about 6% compared to, and that's from March 30th of this year to March 30th of last year. Even though contributions are up and withdrawals from retirees or people separated are down, the overall value of each share is down, so which brought the account balance down just a bit. We have a little over 1,000 people in the plan, and you can see the percentage of them that are active versus retired. And this is really focusing on fees and expenses. It's one of the things that as fiduciaries, the committee needs to really watch to ensure that we're getting the lowest fees and expenses that we can for our participants. You can see that the cost for the Renton Plan is about 1/10th of 1% lower than national benchmark for plans our size, and we'll actually be reducing slightly more in September, another 0.03%. So the committee's really quite diligent about keeping these fees and expenses low, providing good participant education and communication, and then a good lineup of investment options. Our contract with TIAA, our record keeper, expires in September of this year. And because of the current situation in the market and the economy, the committee has opted not to go out to bid on this. It would be a very difficult time to do that. So instead, we're negotiating with TIA just to have a one-year extension of our current contract. Our previous contract was for seven years. So we're looking to extend it just for one year. That will come back before council, before the expiration of the current one, which is in September, the end of September. And then a year from now, that would hopefully be a better time for us to really go out to market and do a full comparison. We continue to leverage the resources that TIA has available and offer target date funds. I can go into more detail about what a target date fund is if everybody's interested. I'll allow time for that. But we have chosen among all of the offerings that TIA has, how to, for different participants, how we best want to communicate with our members. And this is just kind of an overview of the list of options we've chosen. TIA does categorize people based on the demographic information that TIA has available. Primarily, it's age and account balance. A person who is in their maybe late 20s to early 30s and just starting out needs a different kind of communication than somebody who might be in their 60s. And so TIA groups people into these five broad categories and then targets communication specifically to those individuals based on the assumed profile for those people. So I'll pause there for questions about the Deferred Compensation Plan before we talk about the Health Plan.
Thank you, Wendy. Great presentation. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? No? Wendy, you can continue.
Great, thank you. So the Health Plan, I believe that we do have some new members on the council, but I believe that most people are aware that the city has a self-insured or self-funded health plan. So rather than go out and purchase insurance for our employees, the city bears the risk and runs the plan. That ends up being really advantageous to us financially. We manage to keep our costs really quite low for the quality of plan that we have. So the city are, we are the fiduciaries for the plan. We have a third-party administrator, healthcare management administrators, or HMA for short. We use the Regions Network, and then HMA administers based on the discounts available through Regions. That's where we select the preferred providers. And then we use Costco Health Solutions, which is a portion of the Costco Corporation that actually runs the pharmacy benefit management. It doesn't mean that people have to fill their prescriptions at Costco, but it means that Costco administers the claims wherever people fill their prescriptions. So that's just a branch of Costco. The Renton Employee Health Plan Board are the ones who decide on plan design, what's covered, what are the copays, the deductibles, that type of thing. And then the cost share, what overall percent for premiums will be borne by the city and by employees is in the bargaining unit agreements and is approved by council. I said that we're self-insured. We do carry stop-loss coverage, so it's similar to having just a very high deductible. So if any one individual that's an employee or a family member that's covered on our plan, if their expenses for the year exceed a quarter of a million dollars, then the city's no longer liable to pay those fees, those expenses, those claims. Instead, our stop-loss carrier pays those. And then when the calendar year resets, the city again would be responsible and would be paying those. We do have a fully insured alternative through Kaiser. A very small number of our employees choose that. And then to round out our health plans, you can see the other life insurance disability that we have. The two major changes in administration this year is we did change brokers. Our broker, for many, many years, changed their business model. There was the owner or key person was retiring and made some really significant changes, and it really just didn't match with what the city needed going forward. So we did go out to bid and selected a new broker. The council did approve that contract. And then we changed pharmacy benefit managers to Costco. Although Costco's administrative fee is slightly higher than our previous pharmacy benefit manager, the rates for the individual drugs that Costco is able to get are significantly lower and net results in a significant savings to the plan. And so the council did approve that change that was in effect in September of last year. This is just a highlight of the changes that were made for 2020 to the plan. Again, that's reviewed and decided by the Renton Employee Health Plan Board, trying to just keep pace with market. And some of these changes are brought about, advised by our broker, some of them are advised by HMA, and some of them are requested by participants, usually up through unions. For example, the increase in the maximum dental benefit for a year from $1,800 to $2,000 was requested by the unions. This is a summary of the changes in fees. Most significant here is the stop-loss increase of 8.5%. Stop-loss fees are going up nationwide, some of them much even more significantly than that. And that's because of the extreme costs that when you get above, we choose to purchase in risk or sell our risk basically at a quarter of a million. Different companies do it at different levels, but the possibility of having those $2, $3 million claims are going, getting higher and higher. So understandably, stop-loss insurance is. This, I think, is the most important slide of the entire deck, and this is our total expenses year-on-year going back to 2009. And you can see that we did have some fair, pretty steady increase from 2009 until 2014 in expenses year-over-year. This shows our claims, our stop-loss, our administration, and then the city programs, the dark blue at the very top, that's the salaries for the people in the benefits department that manage these plans. Our, a good portion of our salaries are expensed to the plan. And so you can see that from 20, starting in 2014 and ending in 2019, so for six consecutive years, although we have had minor fluctuation from year to year, our health plan expenses are pretty much flat over a period of six years, which is really remarkable for a plan, particularly of our size. I think that that speaks to just being carefully managed and keeping our administrative fees down. And then I want to give a significant amount of credit to our employees and to our unions. They value this healthcare plan a great deal. It's a really good plan, and they work hard to be good consumers, because in any healthcare plan, it's the employee who makes the, who is the consumer and makes the choice on where to spend their money. And then it's the employer and the employee combined that pay the bills. And our unions are very proactive in working with their members. We help provide them information, and they help get it out to really try to keep these expenses down and be good stewards of these dollars so we can continue to offer a quality The last slide I think I have here is on reserves. When you're self-funded, obviously have to make sure that you have adequate reserves. And with forecasted, we use an actuary to forecast our total expenses. And you can see that for 2012, it was about $12.5 million. Best practice is to have about 30% of a year's expenses on hand at any given time to cover your reserves, which would be $3.7 million. You can see that we started 2019 with $3.8 million, and with all the money in and out, we ended with $4.69, almost $4.7 million. So the plan had lower-than-expected claims, and the reserves increased by $890,000 over the year. So the plan is very well-funded. If we started getting, if that turned and we had significantly high claims for an extended period of time, and it started to eat into reserves, we'd have to increase the premiums that both the city and the employees put into the plan to evolve it. So that's all I have. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Wendy. Councilmembers, if you have any questions, I will appreciate if you speak up, because the screen is being shared and I cannot see if you raise your hands. Here now, Wendy, I want to thank you very much again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will continue next with our, next item in the agenda is Liability Insurance Fund Performance Update, and we will have Risk Manager Kelsey Turnus. Kelsey, welcome.
Kelsey on the line?
Jason, Julia, Kristi, can you help him, please?
Okay, I got it. Well, I started sharing my screen too soon and it put it in a different location. I couldn't find it. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Kelsey. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. And that's especially untimely, because my presentation is very jam-packed. So I'm going to do my very best to get through it in as close to the 15 minutes as I can. Is everybody seeing the title page?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So again, I'm Kelsey Turnus. I'm the Risk Manager. It's my pleasure to present to you today on the insurance review from last year, 2019. Throughout the presentation, if you do have questions, by all means, please speak up. Like was mentioned earlier, I won't be able to see you, but feel free to unmute and ask any questions that you have. And I will jump right in, because time is of the essence. So I wanted to start with our total expenditures for the 502 insurance fund to give a general framework here. We're talking about over $3 million in expenditures for the fund. And those expenditures are four main areas. The biggest one is that the fund covers losses for our claims. So that includes workers' compensation, unemployment, liability claims, and then also any property damage that we suffer. The second piece to the fund is it pays for our premiums for both our insurance and our excess insurance, our administrative expenses, and then subrogation we're able to collect on funds from damage to city property, and those go back into the 502 fund. And I'll talk about each of those. So for workers' compensation and for a liability, we're self-insured, similar to what Wendy had shared with our health plan. She likened it to a large deductible, and I think that's the best way to think of it. For workers' compensation, we have a self-insured retention of half a million dollars. And then for liability, it's $250,000. And then you see some other straight deductibles that we have as well. For the administration of workers' compensation, it's a joint effort between benefits in HR, that team, and risk management. Risk management, our goal is on the safety and health side to prevent accidents and injuries. And then the benefits team, should an injury occur, will help the employee through the workers' compensation, workers' compensation claim process through our third-party administrator, Epperali Vivian. Again, the self-insured retention goes up to $500,000, and then our excess insurance, similar to what Wendy spoke about, begins at that level and goes above. The premiums we pay are based on a 10-year claim history, and they are employer-paid. This slide gives you an idea of the numbers and dollars when we talk about these worker compensation claims. 42 last year totaling about $314,000. I do want to point out the large decrease in claims between 2015 and 2016. You'll notice that the number of claims reduced by half and the cost reduced further. That was when the fire authority or the fire department joined and became the Regional Fire Authority halfway through the year in 2016. Unemployment is managed by the HR's Labor Division. It is 100% employer-paid. And this graph gives us an idea of the number of claims and the dollar value. So for last year, for 2019, we had 28 unemployment claims and the cost was under $50,000. Property insurance, we do not have, we are not self-insured for property insurance. We've purchased insurance. We are covered for the typical items that we would be covered for, fire, flood, earthquake, and extreme weather. Our buildings and content is covered. And I'll give you a list here. You can see in general what the property and the property values associated. So around $309 million is insured for the city. It was in 2019. And this gives us an idea of how much property loss we suffer each year. In 2019, it was just, just under $114,000 in property loss. And liability, so this is the biggest chunk of the management of the 502 funds and the expenditures that we see. $250,000, again, that is our self-insured retention, and above that level, we purchase excess liability insurance. Want to give you an idea of what type of claims we see. The most common are the first three here, property damage, bodily injury, and motor vehicle accidents. The civil rights violations are less common, but they're often, they have the potential for high cost and they are often high visibility. We work closely with the city attorney's office in order to help manage these, these litigate, when claims are, have the potential for litigation. This is our liability claims by number. So we average about 70 claims per year. Last year, we had a higher number at 80 claims. By department, this is breaking it down by department, Public Works, 42%, and Police, 30%. Now, some years, more commonly, we see that these numbers are more equal than they were in 2019, where the police have the equal number of claims as Public Works. And then CED and Community Services is represented in that pie as well. We settle 30 to 40% of claims. In 2019, we settled 35 claims, or I'm sorry, 35% of claims, which gives us a rough estimation of which, which accidents we were liable for. And then 50% of the claims we receive approximately are automobile accidents. So that's a little bit about the numbers of liability claims we receive. Here are the costs associated. So you'll notice last year, $110,000, just over that amount for last year. And I include this 10-year history, because it's important to note that years can have higher losses associated with them. In 2009 and 2012, we had large police settlements. And then in 2015, that higher number is associated with a water main break, which was over $300,000. So the second part of the 502 expenditures is we pay our insurance premiums from that fund. The biggest ones are the liability and property insurance. Wendy had also mentioned some changes in the market. We're seeing that as true for property and liability as well. So for property insurance, last year, our premium was 360, I'm sorry, $436,000. But we are, as we approach the July 1 property insurance renewal date, we are expecting a 15% to 20% increase. And it's important to note that that is not because of losses that the city has suffered. I shared before, the $113,000 in losses is quite low. It's really due to changes in, in the market itself, starting in 2017 and 18, large losses for hurricanes. We had Harvey and Irma. There's also been wildfires, as you know, and flooding in the Midwest. And just in general, we're seeing an increase in frequency and severity of, of weather This one, this slide gives us a good idea of our, about our liability insurance premiums that we pay. You'll note from our previous, previously, we were a part of a risk pool, WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority. We exited the risk pool at the end of 2015 and became fully self-insured in the beginning of 2016. And you'll see a dramatic drop of about $200,000 in premium savings. And essentially, that's due to, we were, because of our positive loss run history, we, those that had within the risk pool that had high losses, we were in essence helping to fund their losses and subsidizing those losses. And the market, again, for liability is, is also going up and becoming a harder market. So we did see a 15% increase in our premium for liability insurance, and this graph just gives you a quick snippet, an idea of what's going on with, with the liability market. So the top 50 verdicts or payouts from settlements, in 2018, you can see it was nearly $55 million, the median average of those payouts. And worth noting that, again, our increase in premiums is, is not to do with a poor loss run on the part of Renton, quite the opposite, really. We've had for the last five years, zero losses over $250,000, which, which has helped to keep those low. And I want to add one more thing about that 15% increase. It may seem high when we compare that to other entities that have seen increases of 400 to 500% in their insurance premiums in order to maintain the same coverage. That, that really seems like that number can't be accurate, and it is. So there, we, we are faring well, the city of Renton is, in a tough market. Another aspect and use for the 502 fund, we use all the administrative expenses to run those, these programs. We use Alliant as our broker, and we also have a third-party administrator, Carl Warren, who helps to adjust a certain number of our claims. In 2019, the Carl Warren Company adjusted 20% of our claims, and the remaining 80% was adjusted in-house. The year before, in 2018, we had actually The year before, in 2018, we had actually sent out 40%. So we adjusted more in-house, which attributed to some savings this last year. And another really important aspect of this piece is the risk mitigation, safety and health, and investing in salaries and preventative measures. I want to highlight this quote, "Loss prevention yields greater results than loss control." So once we have an accident, it is very difficult to control those costs. Really, we are, it's more efficient to invest the money in preventing those losses, and you end up saving money in the long run. And that fourth piece is subrogation. This is money going in the correct direction, back into the fund. When there is damage to city property, and we're able to collect on it, we do so, and it averages just over 100, or about $100,000 per year. And in the last three years, we've collected half a million dollars. So this is something I want to highlight as well, that the move, we talked about WCIA and the move to become fully self-insured in 2016. I want to point out the large cost savings that that has produced. So we talked about premium savings of over $200,000 per year. We've also had administrative cost savings. Some of that cost was transferred, but there were additional savings to that. Had an increased control in liability claims and also litigation outcome. And with that, there is the partnership and increased involvement from the city attorney's office. But overall, by implementing strong risk management strategies, focusing on safety and claim management the way that we have, overall, we have saved the city in the last, since we became self-insured and exited the risk pool in 2016, we've saved $1 million. So that was something that I want to highlight as a good decision on the part of council. And this is my last slide. Want to briefly touch on some of the current concerns that we have. COVID-19 has created some new areas for liability, and you have a team that is working hard to get expert opinions and making sure that we're making the right decisions for the city to minimize and eliminate those liability, the new liability with COVID-19. Joint and several liability, again, with Washington, Washington State, if we are liable for, or found liable for 1% of the total liability and the other responsible party, the 99% responsible party is unable to pay, it is possible that we would have to pay up to 100% of that claim cost. Police liability inherent in police activity is high risk, so we manage that with safety and health measures and partnership. Aging subsurface infrastructure, I mentioned the water main break back in 2015. We did have one last year as well, but it was not significant like the 2015 loss that we suffered. But we do have water mains that are nearing and passing 100 years of age. Public records violations for all public entities, those remain a concern and something to stay on top of. So with that, what questions might you have for me?
Thank you, Kelsey. Council members, do you have any questions? And please speak up because I cannot see if you raised your hands. Well, apparently not. So thank you, Kelsey. Great presentation. Highly appreciated.
Thanks.
Next is financial position and COVID-19 respond. And we have Jane Hunt, our administrative service administrator, doing this presentation. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you, Council President Perez and members of the council. I'm going to share my screen now, and hopefully that will go smooth as silk. All right, there we go. Tonight, I'm going to be providing a follow-up presentation regarding the financial impacts of COVID-19 on the city's revenue forecast and the actions we've taken since our discussion when I gave you a presentation on March 20th, April 20th, excuse me. The agenda is just a high level. I'm going to review the April 20th presentation briefly, talk about the city's actions in response to the revenue loss, and our update to the preliminary forecast based upon those actions. I'll share, and finally, I'm just going to talk about next steps. So on April 20th, I shared with you the impact of COVID-19 on the city's revenues for 2020. I estimated approximately a loss of $22.5 million, and that is still our best estimate for 2020 at this point in time with the limited information we have available. We talked about preliminary steps toward mitigating revenue loss. Mayor Pavoni asked staff to reduce discretionary spending, delay hiring of vacant positions, eliminate out-of-state travel and training, reduce overtime, and do whatever they can, given the fact that we have vacant positions to share staff, are as creative as possible to get along in the interim. We talked about next steps. The departments were going to go off and do the identification and implementation of the cost-saving measures. I promised that we would update the forecast as information became available. And then we have promised to pursue state and federal legislative relief for the revenue losses. So our actions to date, indeed, after we last talked at April 20th, the departments went off, they did their homework, and they really rolled up their sleeves. They identified numerous reductions in discretionary expenditures. They really looked at their vacant positions and how they could delay hiring. They also identified capital improvement projects which could be either deferred or eliminated for 2020. And we really scrubbed the reserves to see what available reserves we might be able to use to help get us through this time. And based on all of that information, we updated the financial projections. And those updates include two primary areas, well, three, the implementation of what the cost containment looks like, carrying those first-quarter budget amendments that are ongoing expenses forward into the years beyond 2020, because some of them involved FTEs, which won't go away at the end of this year. And then looking at the impact of potential losses of revenue in 2021 as well. We've also identified a number of other actions. We are currently participating in the shared work program, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. We are proposing a voluntary separation incentive program, which I will also highlight in a minute. And we have continued to pursue funding from federal and state governments. And each of these I will highlight individually. So I mentioned that we're participating in the shared work program. What is it? It's an incentive program offered by the Washington Employment Security Division that provides unemployment benefits for partial furloughs. The purpose is to create savings for the city so that we hold employees whole financially by avoiding layoffs and other measures that would affect them. How does it work? The employees stay on the city's payroll with a reduced schedule between 10% to 50%. And they, at the same time, they retain their benefits and receive partial unemployment plus, that's $600 from the CARES Act, up until July 25th. We currently have approximately 200 employees participating in the program, and we're estimating that the general fund savings will be approximately $642,000. We are also proposing a voluntary separation incentive program. This incentivizes employees to voluntarily separate, and the purpose is just the same as it is with shared work, to avoid layoffs and other measures that financially impact employees while creating savings for the city. How does it work? Employees who have been employed for the city at least two years can voluntarily choose to leave the city, and they would receive 18 months of COBRA at no cost to the employee. And the voluntary separations create vacancies, which we would then hold open, and that's how we achieve savings. So we are intending to work through the details, but we're planning on an ordinance being brought forward to the Committee of the Whole on June 1st. And if the council so desires, we could place it on the council meeting that same evening for our first and second reading. That way, we would be able to start offering that program sooner so that we can realize the savings. We cannot tell you exactly how much we will save at this point, but what we do know is that the employees, the vacancies created will save us some money. So until, but we need the council's permission before we can move forward with this program. There are a number of federal and state funding sources being pursued. None of that revenue as yet has been factored into the forecast because we're still working on our understanding of what is eligible. There are three sources that we know we are currently allocated funding for. We have the CARES Act funding, which we are told we would get $3.141 million. And we are working through, as I mentioned, what are the eligibility criteria to see how much of our expenses we can claim. There are some very strict eligibility criteria. They have to be for activities totally addressing COVID-related workload. They have to be necessary and not activities that were just part of our normal budget, and they cannot, the funds cannot be used to replace lost revenue. The good news is that whatever we don't claim as eligible for expenses can be used for other community support, such as business grants and other community needs. Again, we're working on the analysis of our expenses, and we'll be back with the council to discuss the other community support funding sometime in the near future. We are also eligible for $165,890 from the King County Economic Development Relief Program, and we are working on details as to how exactly that would be implemented. Again, that would be brought forward to council for discussion at a later date. We have also been told that we are eligible for $450,000 in community development block grant funding. These funds would be used later down the road to help business recovery, so not an immediate source of funding. And in the meantime, we're going to continue to pursue other potential sources, such as the King County CARES Act direct allocation, FEMA funding, and hopefully, we will see some congressional legislation coming forward that gives us direct relief for revenue loss. So this is the forecast that I shared with you back in April. And you can see that nothing's changed here. The numbers in red are those revenues that we said would be impacted by COVID-19 in 2020, and that's, as you will recall, about $22.5 million. This is the forecast as of today. I just want to remind you that this is a very preliminary forecast. It is not a full-fledged forecast. We will be doing that as part of our normal budget process for '21 and '22, but it takes considerable work to complete that analysis. So we are going to be bringing that forward to you over the next several months here. But what is factored in here are the items in red. If you'll notice, that first line in red is called base operating expenditures, and you see that 2021, it starts there with $132.1 million. And the reason for that change is, as I mentioned earlier, those include those FTEs that we brought forward with, from the first-quarter budget amendment the council approved. Those numbers carry on over the life of the forecast because they are, the subsequent years are built off of earlier years. The next items, we see the ones, we switched, I've switched those to black for the $22.5 million, but what I also changed are the column, the revenues in column labeled 2021. Those are revenue losses that we are projecting for 2021. We are assuming that we will lose approximately 10% of property taxes and 20% of economically sensitive revenues, such as sales and VNO taxes. The next adjustment is the cost containment by the departments, and you see $5.2 million. In two lines below that, you see another $1.6 million. This is the cost containment that the individual departments prepared as part of this effort, and 5.2 is straight general fund savings because of reduced discretionary expenditures and delayed hirings. The 1.6 comes from internal service funds, but that is the general fund's pro-rata share of the internal fund savings. The line in between there is the annexation sales tax. Council will recall that you set aside money for annexation sales tax reserve because we knew that in the middle of 2018, we would no longer get the sales tax credit from the state. We had initially planned to use $900,000 a year over the course of four years in order to, I'm sorry, five years, six years? Six years. Six years to kind of smoothen and transition into that change of losing the annexation sales tax from the state. However, under the circumstances where we're seeing a lot of one-time loss in revenue, we are pushing that forward to 2020, and we're going to take all the remaining balance that hasn't already been appropriated of $3.6 million. So that will help make us whole for this year. But of course, we had three more years that we had planned to receive that, so we have to make an adjustment for those out years. The next item is the risk management reserves correction. As we rolled up our sleeves and we looked at these reserve funds, we realized that that 502 fund that Kelsey talked to you about earlier, that fund had never had its own unbalance set aside for reserves. It was always just blended into the general fund. And we feel that it makes sense from a best-practice standpoint that that money be segregated into the 502 fund. And so we want to make that correction, but because of the set of circumstances we find ourselves in, we're postponing that correction to 2021. In the meantime, we will hold Kelsey, Kelsey and her 502 fund totally harmless. The general fund is the backstop, and the funds currently exist in the general fund fund reserves, so we are still covered in that regard. Another area that we looked at is the left two expenditures. We decided that we could probably contribute $1 million less to that fund this year and still cover our liability comfortably. So we reduced our contribution for a left one by $1 million. Fleet also took a look at the equipment purchases for the balance of the year and decided that they could take all of the 2020 purchases and postpone them to 2021. And each subsequent year would roll forward a year as well, and they feel comfortable that they can manage under those circumstances and stretch out the life of that equipment, and that saves us $1.2 million. The next slide is the $642,000 in shared work program savings that we just talked about earlier. And then the last line is that $3.9 million that the departments identified in projects and that can be either eliminated or savings identified, or they can be deferred to a later date. So the bottom line, it has improved significantly since what I showed you in April. We still are a little shy on reserves compared to what I showed you at the council retreat back in February, but I will tell you that this picture will improve somewhat because going back up to that base operating expenditure for 2021, where it's $132.1 million, we are headed into this budget cycle knowing that, given the set of circumstances, we need to toe the line. So we are looking at carrying our base budget in from 2020 into 2021. So when we update all of those numbers, we know that that $132 million will be So when we update all of those numbers, we know that that $132 million will be less than what's shown there, because we will not be increasing our cost of living, our other expenses. We will carry a base budget forward and not be bringing new decision packages forward. That will help with every subsequent year thereafter, because each year is built off of the prior year. So next steps, we are continuing to implement the actions that we have, that have been identified. We're going to be ultimately bringing a second-quarter budget amendment, council, to make these changes that I've talked about. We are also, as I mentioned earlier, bringing a proposed voluntary separation program ordinance to you on June 1st. And we will continue to update the forecast as we get additional data and additional revenues distributed to us. And of course, we're going to continue our legislative efforts at the federal and state level, hopefully finding some relief for actual revenue loss. So that concludes my presentation. I will turn it back over to you, Council President Perez.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you very much. Council members, do you have questions? And speak up, because I cannot see you on the shared screen, if you have any questions, please.
Council President?
Council Member Carmen.
Yes, thank you. I guess I don't really have a question, but I just want to say that I think that's a really good body of work to go through all of that. And the picture does look significantly better now that Jane and the team have done all this to, you know, to work out what the details would be. So thank you for that. Thank you for that great presentation. Thank you for what's obviously a whole lot of hard work to figure out how to get through this crisis.
Thank you, Council Member Carmen. I heard someone else, I heard someone else wanted to ask a question? No? No questions, no comments?
Council President Perez?
Council Member Ban?
Yes, thank you. I wasn't sure if someone else said it before I did. Yes, thank you so much, Jane, for the presentation. Very informative. And I have a question regarding the voluntary separation program. I know it's currently in the works, but I'm just curious, as far as the, and this is probably employment law, but I'm just curious, as far as those who have, if those who agreed to go on to that program, of course, they have to have been employed for two, at least two years of the city to get, to be a part of that program. But at the same time, once they are, once they separate with the city, do they, are they able to obtain unemployment benefits?
This is Shane Maloney. I can speak to that. We do not think that they will be able to obtain unemployment benefits, because it will be a voluntary separation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Anybody else has questions or comments?
Council President?
Council Member Ban?
This is Angie. Yes, thank you. Council President, and Jane, I was going to ask, so with regards to the voluntary separation program, is that something that the city used in 2008, 2009, when we last had the last big budget dip? And if so, at that time, how many folks took the city up on that?
I don't think that it was offered. I can fact-check myself on that after this meeting, but I don't recall it being offered. It was offered by some other cities locally. I know that during the Great Recession, that some cities took advantage of this type of a program.
Thank you, Jane.
This is Priti. I was there during the last time, and it was not offered.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Member Vanidetti. More questions? Anybody has more questions today? I'm sorry, today, I cannot even pronounce my name. I'm very sorry about that. Does anybody have more questions? If not, Jane, thank you very much for your presentation. This was very, very, very informative. And now, I move that the council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the city in matters relating to city enforcement actions pursuing our RCW 4231-10, subsection 1I. We will now be taking a final action, and the council, the Committee of the Whole will adjourn when the executive session ends. Thank you. So Julia Christidia will send us an invitation for the meeting. Thank you.